Welcome, everybody. I'd like to call this meeting of the Planning Board, Lakeville Planning Board, to order Thursday, July 23 at 7:00 p.m. First on the agenda, I'm going to read into the record, "In accordance with the Governor's order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, General Authority Section 20 related to the 2020 Nobel Coronavirus Outbreak Emergency, the July 23, 2020 public meeting of the Lakeville Planning Board shall be physically closed to the public to avoid group congregation. However, to view this meeting in progress, please go to facebook.com/LakeCam. You do not need Facebook account to view the meeting. This meeting will be recorded and available to view at later date at www.lakecam.tv backslash." So, the first item on our agenda is a public hearing that's been continued for Bella Way, 39 Cross Street, which is part of 5 Harding Street in Lakeville. It's an application for a definitive subdivision plan, and at the applicant's request, they've asked to have this hearing continued until our next meeting, which is August 13 at 7:00 p.m. So, can I entertain a motion to continue the hearing?
I'll make that motion to continue the hearing until August, was it 13?
Yes.
Yes. Bella's Way.
I'll second that, Barbara.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. I'm going to do a roll call vote. Barbara?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
And myself, vote aye. So, motion carries unanimously, and the Bella's Way hearing will be continued until August 13 at 7:00 p.m. I apologize, all our butters, but that's just, we got an 11th hour request from the applicant. I don't think they had all the information back from the engineers that were reviewing it. So, rather than have it incomplete, that's what they opted to do. So, that's it.
Hey, Mark, this is Dave Morrissey. Real quick question. The plans, they under peer review right now?
Yes.
All right. Do we know who's doing that? Can you, at liberty, to tell us?
Well, I don't want to discuss it too much, but that is in the report from the last meeting. I guess I'll tell you, it's HML Associates. It's a gentleman named Nick Laney that reviews a lot of plans for the town.
Perfect. Thank you. That's all you need. Appreciate it. You guys have a good night.
You also. Good luck, everybody. So, the next item on the agenda is to discuss and vote to designate a member to work with the town clerk, town administrator, and the building commissioner on the recodification of the town's bylaws. This is something that Zink was doing, and I guess it's been going on for a while. The town clerk has a contractor that they've hired to help with this, and I think that what they're basically doing is emailing questions between the building commissioner, because he's also the zoning enforcement officer, town administrator, because she's going to be involved in notifying the Board of Selectmen, and they want somebody from the Planning Board to take part. This is not like an official committee with meetings, I don't believe. My understanding is there'll be emails sent in the group of people participating in the recodification, and it's just, they're cleaning up some of the bylaws, and they want to keep the Planning Board in the loop.
Hi, Mark. So, I attended the meeting today that took place at 11:00 a.m. about this project, and I'm happy for somebody else to step in if they'd like. It sounds like it's a reasonable time commitment, not huge, but probably taking place over the next, you know, several months. And the idea is to just have a thorough review of our bylaws and make sure that they're consistent with state law and bring to attention any inconsistencies. Although I made time to do that meeting, I'm not, I'm not stuck being the person if somebody else is interested and has time, by all means.
Barbara, was that meeting a virtual meeting, like this?
Yes, it was. Yes.
And did you get a sense that there would be multiple meetings, or there would be some email communication?
So, the step forward, so this has been an ongoing process. This isn't new information for the town. The contract was signed, I believe, in January, and the next step of where we're at, we're basically in the beginning stages of an 18-month process, and the documents that they're going to be sending over next will be probably some of the most important that we'll see. And I haven't seen them yet, so I don't have anything. I just jumped in on the call. And then after that, they'll be working on the actual bylaws, actually giving us feedback on that, both from an editorial and legal standpoint. So, that'll be kind of the interesting phase of the project, but in the beginning, it's going to be a little bit more just kind of tedious. You know, when I spoke with them about, you know, our, you know, any reason I would have to be on it would be basically secondary to just be a second set of eyes and to be a bridge to Planning Board. And the, the project manager does feel that Planning Board would benefit from having input into this project. So, I think it'll be important that whatever data comes from this group needs to make it back to us to make sure that everybody's kind of on the same page about what the challenges are, because this stuff will all have to go to town meeting to be finalized. So, I think that you, sorry.
Go right ahead. Go ahead.
I was just going to say, I think Barbara, she, she sounds like she'd be a great, you know, option for this, but you know, if, if you need some help, some, you know, backup assistance, you know, I, I don't mind offering my time as well.
I get a sense that Barbara doesn't want to, between the Serpide involvement and other things, and the Planning Board in general, that you would not be hurt if either yourself, myself, or Peter stepped in.
Correct.
And myself, I'm becoming the chair. There's quite a bit of work weekly that I'd need to do for that, and then the 43D committee, commitment. So, I'd like to see either Peter or you, Michelle, to step in on this one.
Mark, I'd be happy to. However, 11 o'clock time meetings, it won't work. I'm not being negative, I'm just being realistic.
Yeah, I get it.
If they did it at 6:00 or 7:00 p.m., I'd be happy to. If Michelle would be willing to step in, and then if she had conflicts, I could, I could definitely take the odd meeting as well, you know?
Barbara.
If there was, if we could split it, perhaps.
Barbara, is that a fixed schedule that they do?
I do not believe 11:00 a.m. is a fixed schedule, but this was the first meeting, so I don't know quite what the routine is. The consultant definitely works during business hours, but I get the sense that most of this work is going to be done by email. There will be several meetings for people to get together on prior to town meeting. I think it's going to be an interesting project, so.
So, town meeting being with an 18-month timeframe?
Yeah, we're talking about.
Would be next June?
I would say it's probably, I mean, spring of 2022.
Oh.
Right, because it's 18-month project, so we've got a full year, and then.
And change.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, if they made it for fall meeting in 2021, that would be cool, but.
The purpose would be to get on the town meeting agenda with an amended bylaw or zoning bylaw to adopt the amendments at town meeting, correct?
Correct.
So, do you have interest, Michelle?
Yeah.
Do you have the time?
As it is now, I do have more time and flexibility, but you know, I can't say for sure if that will change.
Understood.
So, Michelle, you can pass it off to me if it turns out that you don't have the time, you know, down the road, because this is an 18-month commitment. Just let me know, and I'll be happy to help out.
I as well. I mean, if, if it's, if the meetings are in the evening or by email, if we could more work it as a, you know, as a team rather than just one individual, I think that's, that's actually even better, you know what I mean?
I agree.
Rather than just one person replying, if we could all see what they're sending us and then chime in before we send back anything, you know, just to keep the runaround down to a minimum, hopefully, to, you know, get every dollar's worth out of what we're getting that contractor for, you know?
Love that idea.
We need to be cautious of those communications, just not to violate the open meeting law.
Yep.
Kathy, do you think that it would be wise to get updates, put it into our agenda to say we're going to get updates from if Michelle does this? And Michelle, maybe you could do a brief summary of, or maybe there's just one or two bylaws that you're reviewing at a time, and get those on the agenda just to have a brief discussion if there's, I don't know how quick the response time is, and if it's something that they basically within two days need a response, maybe it's something you can just communicate it to me or Barbara. We could circulate it to Peter, but again, we've got to be cautious about talking in a group of more than two people, because it would be a violation with three people forming a quorum. So, I'd make a motion to appoint Michelle to be the designated member to work on the recodification process with the town.
I'd like to amend that motion to include a written correspondence from Planning Board to, probably Board of Selectmen would be appropriate, to let them know that we've appointed someone.
You get that, Kathy?
I do. I got it all done last night, too.
I second that motion. So, we have a motion and a second. Do a roll call vote. All in favor? Barbara?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
And myself, aye. Motion carries unanimously. Next item on the agenda is to approve the meeting minutes for the July 9, 2020 meeting of the Planning Board.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I second that, and before we vote, I'd like to open it up for any discussion.
That was quite, quite a good job. Thank you, Kathy. That was a lot of net.
That was pretty quick.
I really set my mind to that one. I just thought it was a good idea, because it's
You probably didn't want to wait on that.
Open, you know, I don't want residents thinking, oh, they're not posting anything, so, things like that. I usually try to get them done as quick as possible.
No, I think you did a good job. I think the minutes were great. So, we have a motion and a second. Take a vote. Barbara?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
And myself, aye. Motion carries unanimously to approve the minutes of the July 9 meeting. Next item on the agenda, new business, is to approve a South Coast Media Bill. Everybody seen that?
Yeah, a motion to approve the bill and leave it out for us to sign.
I'll second.
All in favor? Barbara?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
And myself, aye. Motion carries unanimously to approve the South Coast Media Bill. Next on the agenda is the master plan. So, I'm just going to open the floor to discussion. I'd like to go through each member one at a time, just to have some input from them. I'll start with you, Barbara.
Okay, so 20 years ago, I served on the original Master Plan Committee, and I'm really grateful for the work that was done here, but much of it is a repeat of what we had had, what we had requested 20 years ago. So, we talk about the implementation of the action items that are indicated on this report. I'd really like to us to get serious about that and try to get some of these projects done. So, that's going to take some policing, maybe by Kathy or somebody else that wants to project manage us, but hopefully we can chop away at these things, because some of the, there's a lot of action items in there that apply to Planning Board, and they're very important, and I realize they're easy to postpone, but time passes, and we really have to address some of these items. So, that's my two cents.
Peter?
I agree. It, it, time flies like, she said 20 years. That's, that's amazing that that thing's been in progress this long, and I know this is what revision to, to it.
You like 16, Barbara?
Thanks.
Sorry, interrupting you, Peter. Go ahead.
No, that's okay. I, I agree. The best way to knock out some of those things is just to add them to the agenda, and that way we can't, not in the old business category where we kick it down, like, kick the can down the road, but add it to like a headline agenda right up high, and we'll work it for a while, you know, each time, starting shortly, you know, possibly after the August break.
Michelle, would you like to add anything?
I feel the same way, you know. I'm ready. Let's implement it. I threw a bunch of information into a spreadsheet. I don't know if you guys had a chance to look at it, but I wanted to break it down by year, goal year, and have a, a column at the end for agenda dates, so when we have it on the agenda, or maybe, you know, if we don't have it on the agenda and we know that this is coming up, that way, okay, we need to address this, and if you didn't have a chance, I can send it out again if you didn't see it, but I thought, you know.
I haven't seen that spreadsheet, but that's exactly what we need, is something to kind of keep us focused. So, I would even make a motion that we adopt that as a working document, even though I haven't seen it yet, because I'd like to see us get, you know, get on a schedule and somehow, you know, execute out on this. Normally, at work, somebody would be chasing me to get things done, right? But Kathy only has so many hours. She's smiling, I can see her. She's like, yeah, I have to chase you guys. So, yeah, something to get it, chop away at it. I love that you took that initiative. Thank you, Michelle.
So, I think it's great. I do think that some things in it are, I don't want to say unattainable, but I think from a town planning standpoint, it's very difficult to implement a specific thing where we're not the developer. You know, one of the, I read through all of the comments that helped to generate the master plan, that we're in the appendices version, the fatter version that we got, and, you know, several people had commented that they wanted more affordable housing for 55 and over. That, that's sort of tough unless we're the developer, you know?
No, it's not. I, no, I think those are the kinds of things that we say, you have to have overlay districts. I mean, we did that once before with, that was actually what happened over La Barrera, right? We had the overlay district that said, this is going to be a 55 and older community, and the developer then had to comply with that overlay district. You know, where it stand on, stands on affordable housing, you, you, Mark, you know what I'm going to say. I mean, affordable housing is a huge problem in the Commonwealth, and frankly, if you look at other areas that are at risk for economic downturn, there are areas where the housing is markedly out of balance. So, if we want to avoid their fate, we have to understand the issue of affordable housing. That's going to be part of the master plan discussion, right? So.
Yep. Yeah, absolutely. I just, you know, and maybe I use that one as a bad example, but I also think, you know, it looked like about 20 people gave comments out of 11,000. You know, we have 11,000 residents in town, and there was a fairly small portion of input, and I, and I looked at all the attendance sheets on the workshops, and it's people we know that are involved in the town. Not that we don't want to dispel their, 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 so we should really appreciate their input, but it still doesn't speak to the other, say, 10,500 people in town.
So, when I was on Master Plan, and even since then, one of the things I do is take a time to read the, and for anybody that's watching this, it just speaks to the importance. We want to see those town surveys. There's a survey that goes out every year. I think it goes with the town census, and it asks you some general questions, and then that information is reported back. And for 20 years that I've been reading those reports, they say the same thing. There's nothing that's really changed materially in those surveys that come back. And if people don't show up to these meetings or don't show up to vote, the only thing we really kind of have to go on is kind of a compilation of all three, right? But the consistent factor is, everybody that lives here wants to maintain the rural character of the community. They don't want drive-throughs, they don't want food developments, they, they like driving home and seeing a peaceful, green area, you know? And we are home to some of the greatest resources in the Commonwealth, so.
So, I think basically that says it in a nutshell. I think we all like the master plan. We want to approve it, but the implementation and how we do that's going to be, it needs to be on our agenda.
Yep.
On at least a once-a-month basis. We need to have a master plan night where if we have, the second meeting of the month is a little lighter, and we take a half hour just to say, this is what I want to attack, and try to implement something out of it, even if it's one item a year. So.
The implementation plan, I don't have it open in front of me, but there's a lot that has to be done within five years. So, I will review Michelle's email to see what those projects look like, but some of those things, they've been, we've been waiting around to finish them anyway, so we might as well jump on top of them and get some of that stuff done.
You and I had a discussion a while back, Barbara, that not much has changed from the previous master plan to this one.
Right.
We need to temper ourselves to, you know.
Get it done.
Well, we need to get it done, but I think it is difficult. It would be naive to think that we're going to get all this done by 2030.
Mm-hmm. We'll have to start tackling it, so we need to get it on the agenda, I guess.
Yep. So, I agree. So, I'll make a motion to approve or endorse the master plan dated July 2020 that's also titled "Lakeville 2030: A Plan for the Future."
Did we not already approve this? I thought that was already approved.
Nope.
No? Okay, then I'll second that motion.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor? Barbara?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
And myself, aye. So, motion carries unanimously that we approve the master plan to start the implementation process. So, Kathy, don't even ask. Next month, next meeting, have that on the agenda.
Okay.
So, one other thing I'd like to touch on. Kathy, you had said, or Barbara had said about notifying the Board of Selectmen or the powers that be that Michelle has been appointed the recodification process. And there was an email about Planning Board communication during the week. Is any of that stuff that we can help with, Kathy? Or is that something that's just administrative that you just take care of and we don't need to worry?
I do take care of it. I mean, I, I kind of have my own action list now that I've been doing, so it was on my list. I just hadn't got to it, because, you know, I was doing the minutes and things like that, but usually that's something that I would take care of, and I usually have a note to do so, so.
And I have a question for myself, and I don't want to get into the hearing we just continued, but I had communication with the police chief and indirectly with the Highway Department regarding road safety on subdivision. If I was to draft something and email it to you, could you put it on Town Letterhead to circulate it for me?
Yep.
Yeah, and just, is that an easy cut and paste for you?
Yeah.
Okay. Because I just emailed them directly, and so it's, you know, they gave a good response, but it's not technically on an official Town Letterhead. So, in the future, just so I know that I can send a communication through you, so you can put it on that easy.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay. All right. Does anyone else have anything else?
I have one thing. The new revised plans for Bella Way did come in. I don't know if you want to pick them up or, or not, just to let you know that.
I probably would like to come get a copy.
Okay, I'll throw them out in the closet.
Yeah, we'll leave it at that as far as Bella Way, because it's been continued. But yeah, I would like to review them.
Okay. And the long plane, that is also in there to be signed with the box, signature box.
Okay.
So, I had asked her if she.
Sorry, I didn't.
Long point.
Oh, long point.
Long point, sorry. Because I had asked her if she could just do one and then copy it, so there's just one dropped off, so I'm going to assume that they'll come back and pick it up and then take the copies instead of having to sign multiple copies.
Did you ever get through that, the finding with Lilian regarding Riverside Drive?
Yes, I have that to be signed as well, also.
And I'll be the one signing that.
Yep.
Did we need to put something on our agenda to, I'm not going to think of the term right, to reconcile a vote?
Yeah, I think same thing. Do you want to have the PAA meeting before the regular meeting?
Yeah, that was right. It was a PAA.
To ratify that vote.
Second properly on some of that stuff, so we got to ratify that vote. So, yeah, please do the PAA.
Okay.
It's, it'll be just a quick vote on that one.
Yep.
Mark, where do we stand with getting a fifth member?
Oh, I'm glad you asked. So, I got a call from one of the selectmen. He had said that they got at least four letters of interest.
Really? Good.
So, he said to help the process, he had requested resumes from all four, call them applicants. So, I have not heard since then. I have not seen resumes, so I, when I see them, I'll let you know.
Gotcha. Okay.
Anyone, anything else?
I just wanted to give you a quick update on Serpide. Last time we had a meeting, I mentioned that there were some funds for businesses that are struggling, and so we definitely want to have those conversations with businesses. There is, Serpide was allocated $400,000 in grant money to help with economic development programs. I think we've got some really serious challenges coming around the corner, for sure, economically. We need to be prepared for that. We need to be thinking about how we're going to protect the businesses that are in place. So, I just, I just wanted to bring up that that's out there. There's a couple of other things happening, but that's a, that's a big one. So, if businesses are challenged, they should, and you know, it depends on what kind of, what their challenges are, because everybody's got challenges, right? But if there's a way to respond to some of the situations, like, I would think, a good, a good example might be, for example, a restaurant that couldn't open because they didn't have a way to have an outdoor presence. That might be something we want to have a conversation about, right? How do we keep, keep that restaurant business open? How can both the town of Lakeville and the state accommodate supporting them with making sure that their business stays open? And that, that's important for all of us from a tax revenue standpoint as well, not just neighborly, but income-wise. So, I just wanted to mention that out there. The other thing I wanted to mention, I don't have the website to give to you tonight, but we had a nice presentation last. but we had a nice presentation last night from the Cannabis Control Commission, and I asked the question about both assignment of contracts, which I'm a little bit concerned about, as well as how many contracts have been signed for what type of marijuana business in which communities. And apparently there's a very, there's a pretty sizable database, and the Cannabis Commission, so I'll circulate that website. I actually have to get the minutes, because I don't think it's written down here, but, oh, it's at CCCMass.com, I believe, Cannabis Commission. So, it would be interesting, it will be interesting to take a look at that and see which communities have signed, how many they've signed, and for what, as we go forward. So, a total of, just to give you an idea, there were... There are 272 pending applications, 103 provisional that have been approved, 290 provisional licenses, and 152 final licenses. So, it's a slow-moving process for businesses that want to get into, get into this world. If a company does want to assign their business, they do have to go back through the Cannabis Commission, so that was a little bit of good news for us, right? So if you have a company that signed into a community host agreement, signed an agreement with the town of Lakeville, and then sold their contractual rights to another company, they're kicked back automatically up to Cannabis Commission to go back through review, so food for thought there.
I would hope that that, that, that kicking back to the, you know, the Cannabis Commission is enough of a deterrent, that that happens, pretty rare.
They didn't have a handle, when I asked that yesterday, they weren't sure how many times it's happened. I would think it would be a deterrent, but right now, I would imagine some of these businesses are really, really struggling, given this timeline. I mean, this is a long timeline, an unpredictable timeline, right? A lot of these companies have signed leases, they weren't expecting to have a pandemic and, and all that kind of stuff. But I'm, I'm mostly interested to see what's happening around us, to make sure that Lakeville is kind of in play with what's happening in other communities and not overly signing or overly, you know, embracing the gold rush.
Yep.
That's my update.
Strange times we live in. I appreciate the, the update, Barbara. Anybody else have anything? This is one of the quickest meetings we've had in a while.
Motion to adjourn.
A second, that beat ya. All in favor, Barbara?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
And myself, aye. Motion carries, meeting is adjourned. Look forward to seeing you guys on...